Welcome everyone to the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Invocation will be given by Commissioner Ronnie Reese and pledge of allegiance by Vice Chair Josh Lill.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today and we thank you for the blessings that you give this day and the good things you give unto us each day. Pray for each person that's here tonight, for our county citizens, for all our county employees that you would help them, give them safety each day, for all our fire and safety, all those who protect us each day. Just be near to them, give us clear minds tonight as we make decisions that move Alexander County forward. All these things we ask in thy name, amen.
Please place the flag, please. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I do want to point out, first thing, that we do have all of the commissioners in attendance tonight. Commissioner Yoder is on the cellphone up here listening in and he can comment at any given time that he wishes as well. So we'd like to welcome you, Commissioner Yoder. Let's see here. Need approval or motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as set.
Second. All in favor? We're going to open a public hearing in just a moment. It will be in regards to, it'll be item number one, amendments to the special events ordinance. It'll be delivered by Ben Falkenberry, Alexander County Attorney. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Make a motion to open a public hearing for the special events ordinance.
Second. All in favor? Mr. Falkenberry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I present a few amendments to the Alexander County Special Event Ordinance. That was adopted December second, two thousand and nineteen, and became effective January first of two thousand and twenty. These changes are based on recommendations from various county departments that I have compiled. Major focus of these amendments is to expand the requirements of obtaining a special event permit to private commercial properties where the event will have greater than five hundred participants. And the reasoning behind this amendment is the same as what was presented back in two thousand and nineteen. These events, of course, where they meet the five hundred participant threshold often require coordination between county personnel, often must comply with the North Carolina Building Code, National Electric Codes, of course, they have to comply with ADA requirements and fire codes and various other state and federal requirements. The authority to enact these amendments and the underlying ordinance lies in the county's general police powers, which were delegated to the county by the statutory provisions located in Chapter one fifty-three A, specifically Article six of that chapter. Those powers being the authority to define, regulate acts, omissions, or conditions detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of Alexander County citizens and peace and dignity of Alexander County. Again, the main purpose of this ordinance is to ensure that county officials are aware of such events and can coordinate with event holders to ensure that standards are being met for the safety and welfare of our citizens, as well as making the process for individuals who want to hold events in this county as streamlined as possible and acting to educate them as to the requirements necessary, giving them ample time to comply before the event is held. This ordinance is not an attempt to tell people what to do with their property, but to secure liability and control over major events and to ease the burden on emergency services. It's important to point out and reiterate that this ordinance does not apply to local, state, and federal functions, school events on school property where there is a safety and emergency plan in place, church or worship activities happening on church-owned property, or, and this is an amendment to the current ordinance, properly permitted or grandfathered businesses holding events in spaces specifically designed for such events with capacities exceeding five hundred people where there is a safety and emergency plan approved by the county. Or, of course, it's important also to point out, any event of less than five hundred people held on private property. I believe the five hundred-person threshold to be not overly burdensome or broad, but of course, that threshold is negotiable. But I believe the five hundred-person threshold to be appropriate is also consistent with other counties' ordinances of this nature. Another amendment to the current ordinance is the removal of the waiver of fees. This ensures equal treatment of each special event holder. Some other changes would be the personnel in the review committee. The Health Department will be removed, the Parks Director, the Planning Director will be added. This does not, of course, limit the county manager's ability to appoint others as he deems necessary. The majority of special events happen on county property and occur on county parks, either the Courthouse Park or Rocky Face. And Alicia Stamey, our Parks Director, is already substantially involved in the permitting process, but was not currently listed as a necessary member. And special events will also need to comply with zoning requirements, so that is the purpose of adding the Planning Director. Again, special events ordinances like these would establish a structured process for permitting and staging of planned public events to ensure adequate allocation of county resources. I'll be open to any questions that any of you may have.
So, Mr. Falkenberry, essentially, this ordinance is based upon safety.
That's correct. It has been since it was enacted.
Right.
These are minor changes with the main purpose of adding the five hundred threshold to private property for the same reasons.
So, yeah, right, which, I mean, I'm in full agreement. And, you know, obviously, as a body, the county wants to make sure that when folks have a special event, you know, with quotes, whatever that may be, that, you know, we can adequately provide the services needed. We can adequately provide safety. We can make sure that everything is done above board and for the enjoyment of the participants. In just my opinion, I think the changes are very necessary.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good change. You know, we implement something and sometimes it looks real good on paper, but it don't plan out too good. But this, I think, you know, helps people to understand, you know, if it's on your own property, you know, you got more than that. And if there's more than five hundred, in my mind, with the way things are happening now, you know, you never know what's gonna happen. Hopefully, nothing ever happens in the county, but things happen fast when they do. And that just helps somebody helping to get there quicker because they know, you know, where something's going on at. I think it sounds good to me.
And just a blurb to the public. I don't think any of us or anyone in Alexander County are looking to limit the enjoyment or freedoms of the people of Alexander County. You know, which, like Mr. Falkenberry said, you know, we're not talking about, we're not talking about church functions. We're not talking about functions at the high school. We're not talking about functions on any school property, any county property, any, you know. This is strictly if someone wants to have a significant gathering, which I think five hundred people is definitely a significant gathering, that we can make sure that the needed services are provided. You know, so, you know, I'm a small government person. And I really don't believe we should be involved in anything we shouldn't have to be involved in. But I really don't feel like this is overstepping or overreaching any reasonable limitations, you know, based on, you know, trying to make sure that we keep the citizens of the county safe and make sure that they can enjoy, you know, the event that they're attending.
Anyone in the audience have any comments or concerns in regards to this public hearing? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing for a special events ordinance.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Falkenberry. Do I have a, is there any discussion by the Commissioners in regards to anything on the public hearing? Anything mentioned or concerned? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the special events ordinance as given.
Second.
All in favor? unanimous. Moving, thank you. Moving on to item number two, two thousand and twenty-three Personnel Policy Revisions be delivered by HR Director Sylvia Turnmeyer.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. This evening, I have for you several revisions to the personnel policy. Actually, we've been working on these for quite some time. There are many that are minor in that policy due to grammatical errors or matching what we already have in practice. And then some items we unfortunately missed when we did the last revisions in two thousand and nineteen to do with a consolidation. There are a few substantive requests that I highlighted in the memo that was in your packet. Staff is requesting approval of these revisions with an effective date of July one to match the fiscal year. These have also been reviewed and approved by the interim management team. The first item that I had listed in your memo is, could be found on page eighteen in regards to the work week. It specifies that we have a one-hour lunch break period. There have been questions in the past about whether we do thirty minutes, an hour, if we have to take one at all. And with our forty-hour standard week, we've always had an hour for the lunch break, so I wanted to specify that there. On page twenty-three, instead of listing specific days of the week, I just wanted to eliminate that chart and state what we have just below it, that we follow the state holiday schedule. It's already in there. I just wanted to delete that chart and move it up. On page twenty-five, if you'll take a look at the annual leave rates, and let me flip to that while you are. We have always had a set of leave accrual rate hours for a regular forty-hour employee as well as an EMS employee who works twenty-four hours, but we have never had one that recognizes the twelve-hour shift of our deputies and detention officers and others that work that timeframe. So I would like to include an accrual rate for them as well. And on page thirty-four, it places parameters on the ability to use leave without pay. That leave without pay has always been available to those who need to be out of work for medical reasons that do not qualify under FMLA. Sometimes there are other leaves that are taken for vacation or things of that nature. And this clarifies the section so that the department has more guidance in whether to okay that leave without pay request. The biggest change, honestly, in all of these revisions that I've brought to you this evening is on page thirty-seven, where we had child involvement leave. I would like to change that to child and/or community involvement leave. As our workforce is changing, we have a lot of employees who do not have children. And they would like to be able to use that eight hours for something else. So they have asked that we have community involvement leave where they can help with schools, help with Habitat for Humanity, other volunteer organizations. And so it does not change the amount, which is only eight hours in a calendar year. It just alters what you can use it for to include community service. And then the last major item was on page forty-two, which is the rehiring of county employees. I would like to be able to count their previous service time in calculating their annual leave rate. And we did not have that provision in there before. Glad to answer any questions you have.
Go over that last section right there again.
Okay. Let me flip to it, so.
The rehiring?
Yes. Sometimes we have individuals who work here for several years, go to an adjoining county, and then come back. And I would like to be able to recognize their previous service time with us to match the annual leave accrual rate. So if they were here for two years, they don't start back over at the first level.
So they would start back based on their time served in Alexander County?
Correct.
Not Alexander plus Iredale Caldwell?
Correct.
Kataba, whomever?
Right.
Will that make a significant difference in ability to hire qualified people?
It has, honestly, because they don't want to start back over at the seven-point-eight-three or eight hours.
Maybe they shouldn't left start with.
Yeah.
Yeah. My thought is, maybe they shouldn't left start with. No offense, you know, I mean, I'm just sort of the way I am, but, okay.
Yeah, I'd say I agree with you, Josh.
You know. I mean, real world, just throwing this out there. If I'm hired by some company, you know, whatever company, you know, I'm in construction. So I could work for Joe Blow Construction Company, I'll leave where I am now. If I go back, they're not going to reward me with, oh, wait, you were with us for eight years before. Because that's just not the real world. I might hate to say that, but that's truth, you know?
How has that been handled in the past when someone's left here? Let's say they left a year ago, they want to come back, and they were here for two years previously. Were we honoring any of that or not? Or was that on an individual basis?
Sometimes the county manager would make a decision on an individual basis with the department head, but other than that, no.
I mean, because everybody knows here that I think government should run like private business. And if that was the case, there'd be a lot of things that were a lot different, you know? But I'm just... My wife and everybody else say I talk, you know, tell me I talk too much, so. Kent says it too. Respectfully, I think, yeah.
Well, I don't blame anybody for trying to better theirself.
No.
But a lot of times the grass is not as green on the other side of the hills you think it is.
That's right.
But.
Well, it's a pleasure of the Board.
Well, I think in the time that we are in with being able to hire people, it's not like, I know Josh is in a different area than me and Kent, but, you know, I never would have believed that you could get paid for just telling somebody you're going to work for them. You know, whenever I changed jobs, you started, you know, wherever you qualified to start at. So, you know, it's a whole different game. And if we want to get good employees, maybe this is something that we need to be looking at.
The labor market is very, very tight and very difficult. I mean, I know that from my date, my real job, as well as, you know, from the county perspective, you know, the county's perspective.
It's very different now, even from just five years ago.
Oh, man, the last three years or so have been, you know, I mean, I don't have anybody that works for me personally, including high school kids that are doing work study, their senior year. You know, they're making less than eighteen bucks an hour. And they come and go as they please. And they don't show up when they're supposed to. And they leave early. And I don't have any choice because there's nobody else out there. But, I mean, Marty's sitting there going, yeah, I don't know, you know? But I still, you know, I really wish.
Well, I guess I'll be the one that tests the water. I make a motion to approve the Personnel Policy Revisions as given.
I make a second. All in favor?
Yeah, I mean, what choice do we have?
We don't have no choice.
No, we don't. And that's terrible.
Larry.
But we don't have a choice, you know?
Okay. You know, it's most, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Different world, that is for sure.
It is.
Item number three, telework policy for DSS staff given by Director Thomas Mitchell.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this is along the same vein of different world, different times. So these two items were perfectly placed together. First of all, I know it says on the agenda, DSS staff. I did come prepared to talk about supervision. That was the, what I received that you guys wanted to hear about. So, but I'm here to answer any questions. But, you know, as you have just finished talking about, this is an extremely tight labor market. And in the DSS world, you know, we talk about this all the time in directors' meetings, where we're all just fighting for the same talent in the same pool. And so we're just kind of taking from each other. But, you know, we have a really great staff at DSS that work hard and that has been, you know, fairly stable over the past several months. And what I want to talk to you tonight about is the ability for those in supervision to be able to maintain that one day a week to work remotely. So first of all, I want to thank you guys for approving the, or the management team at least, for approving the remote work schedule period. So staff have been doing that. The supervisors were doing this one day a week prior to me coming here. And so this became a question once we got the policy approved and then we started getting the approvals for supervisors sent over for manager signature. And I think that's kind of when this question came up. So I wanted to kind of give you some information, kind of let you know where I stand on it, and take questions. I gave you tonight a survey of ten counties. These are the ten counties that responded to my request. I did call some of the counties that were close to us, if they didn't respond, for response. So I did get some of those counties on here as well. As you can see, there is no consistency across the state how they're handling this. And I just asked them for leadership, you know, are they allowing their leadership to work remotely? And so out of the ten, only one is not allowing it and not considering it. The rest of the counties range from, like Commissioner Lell said, you just do what you need to do as long as the job gets done, to more rigid, more structure, one day a week, two days a week, that kind of thing. The other thing that I handed to you would be an example of an addendum that we could add to the policy that would make it clear how supervisors would be held accountable for supervising their folks. And so I think when you look at supervision in DSS for simplicity reasons, there's really two types of supervision. One for the economic services side, for Medicaid, food stamps, child support, and then social work programs. And for social work programs, you know, they are, those aren't eight-to-five jobs. Those are whenever-to-whenever jobs, weekend jobs, nighttime jobs. And so even when the supervisor is sitting in the building, much of their supervision is being done remotely anyway because the worker's in the field and the supervisor's in the office. So even before telework, remote work was a thing in local government, they were still being supervised remotely. On the economic services side, that's not really the case because everybody was here. But with staff working remote some of the week, now our economic services supervisors are also really good at supervising remotely as well because they may have a worker that's home-based and they're in the office, but they're still supervising that employee, answering their questions, doing a teams meeting with them, keeping them engaged. I will also point out that during the time when supervisors have been allowed to do the one day per week, I haven't, no issues have been brought to me that this has caused. And there's always another supervisor in the building if somebody shows up with an issue that needs to be handled by a supervisor. So there's always a supervisor in the building if needed. You know, one of the, we do have some higher-level positions that are open now, one retirement and one resignation. And both of those employees are going to work for the federal government, Social Security. And even Social Security works remote part of the week. And so part of this is the day and time we're in. Part of this is the expectation of younger staff who come in. And we want to be able to promote from within. And I think we're really getting to that point where we can start promoting staff from within. So this is really just about supporting the staffs at all levels, trusting them to do their job. They all do a very good job on the staff level and the supervisor level. And we would just like to see that continue for the benefit of the county. And I'll certainly answer any questions you guys may have.
So you said it had been done. Is anybody currently doing it or just employees?
It ceased when we got the notice to stop. I was saying it has been going, they've been working one day remote since folks came back to the office from COVID, as I understand it. But they're not working remote now.
So clarification, employees at DSS, is anyone working the flex schedule or working from home?
Yes, staff level.
Staff level.
The only people that were made to stop were supervisors and above.
And that's both on the social service side and the economic?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. My wife worked for social services for a short period of time until she finally realized and admitted that she needed to be the mother of our seven children and that we couldn't, she, you know, we couldn't make it work with her working outside our home right now. But she made the comment to me, she did work from home, this was during, I guess, COVID times. But she made the comment to me that she had to, she had to basically check in and/or report what she was doing. she had to basically check in and/or report what she was doing every fifteen minutes.
That's not the practice now.
Okay.
No, because you know.
Man, I'm just asking, you know, like I said.
Everything that they do, and you know, that's the other thing. Alexander County has been really elevating our, our technology to be able to do this in a seamless way. I mean, our phone system, when, when customers call in, they don't know if you're at home or sitting in your office, as it should be. Emails, everything works seamlessly, and that's the way it should be. All the work can be viewed anywhere you have a secure Wi-Fi connection. So there's no need for stat, for supervisors to micromanage at that level and say, call me every fifteen minutes to.
Well, and I don't think it was a call. It was just she had to account for what she was doing, essentially.
Yeah, on the, on the day sheet, you do.
Yeah, I think that may be what it was.
Yeah, but not, not each fifteen minutes, but fifteen minute increments.
Okay.
So if you work for somebody.
Exactly. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I mean, it wasn't that she had to check in every fifteen minutes.
Right.
But she had to basically say, this is what I was working on from one, you know, one fifteen, one fifteen to one thirty.
Right.
So on and so forth.
We do have to do that for federal funding. That's how we draw down our federal funding.
Okay.
So currently, that's the system that North Carolina uses. It's called a day sheet, and it is in fifteen minute increments.
And I think part of that was, was so you, it could be determined where the funding for her work would come from.
Exactly.
Whether it was federal funding, state funding, local funding.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that still has to take place, whether you're in the office or not in the office.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to say that I think if you're a supervisor, you ought to show up at the office. That's my personal opinion.
That's what we got to bill them for. If this does get approved, how many could be off? And would it be one a day or more than that?
So like in child welfare, for instance, we would have two supervisors that kind of crisscross and, and help each other out. Only one of those would be allowed to remote work on that day. And then in foster care and adoptions, it was the same thing. So it's a kind of a supervisor pair where they have different teams, but their duties kind of overlap. And one would be on the, one would be in the building if the other one was remote working. And I do want to emphasize, we're only talking about one day a week, but they would not have that same day. The same would be true for economic services. So you would always have a supervisor in the building that could stand in for that supervisor when they're remote working, but there really is no need to stand in for that supervisor unless you had a face-to-face interaction that required a supervisor. And that's, that's not that frequent. But that would be the only time that another supervisor would have to cover for the person that's working remotely.
Is, is there currently flexibility? You know, I mean, and I know there, there are many facets of DSS. Lot of jobs, lot, you know, tons of people that are affected by what's done. But I mean, currently, you know, say a child protective services CPS worker that's on call, is called out at eleven PM from their home, you know, investigator or whatever. And all of a sudden, it's five AM, you know, and they've had to go out with the sheriff's department, you know, take children from a, an unsafe situation. Try to find somewhere for them to go. If they can't find somewhere for them to go, you know, take them to the DSS office, stay with them, who knows, you know, whatever. Is there currently, you know, say Mary Smith, you know, went out at eleven, eleven PM, worked till five AM. Is there currently, you know, I won't say a process, but you know, something in place that, okay, they don't have to be in the office at eight AM the next morning.
Right, yes, right, they.
Because that, you know, because that, that person, male or female, whomever it is, you know, was out from eleven PM till five AM, you know, which is not normal working hours by any, by any stretch of the imagination.
Right.
For a nine to five job. You know, but I mean, they're, so they're not expected to be in the office the next morning at eight AM.
No.
You know, which I mean, some would be depending on, I'm sure.
I would hope the supervisor would send them back home, you know, because they need a certain amount of rest.
Depending on, you know, the situation and what's going on.
Right.
You know, because, because I mean, social work's one of those things, you don't do it for the money. Because money's not good enough to do it for.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's a calling, similar to being a teacher or, you know, and so there are things in place now that allows those, you know, those people that are working late at night or wait, wait early in the morning to have reasonable, you know, reasonable breaks, I guess, from the normal workday to make up for what they've had to do in the off hours.
Right. And that scenario that you just laid out happens with supervisors too sometimes. And so, you know, whether or not we're calling it remote work, they are still working beyond five on weekends and that kind of thing, and those allowances are still made. So if you need to come in a little later because you're working in the evening helping your worker or something else, those allowances are still being made and have to be made, whether you call it remote working or not. So that, especially on the social work side, there's a lot of flexibility that has to be given due to the nature of the work. Whether we have a policy for it or not, it's just, it has, you know, you can't, like you said, you can't work around the clock and then continue to come to work that morning. So we have to be able to flex that schedule where you, if you were out late, you can come in late to make up for that time. And that happens at all levels currently.
I have a question. How many CPS staff do you have?
Approximately forty.
Social worker?
Mm-hmm.
How many supervisors in CPS?
Four.
Four.
And the staff count includes supervisors.
So if there was remote working going on on the supervisor's position, how many at one time would be in a remote setting?
On a one day a week model, only one.
One at a time?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, do you have anything to weigh in on?
Larry, he's still there?
We lost him.
He's still on there. Maybe he's got me muted.
What I was asking, Mr. Yoder, do you?
Not just for the supervisor. And I was reading the paperwork here, it said all employees are being involved. As long as all employees are involved, I don't have a problem with it.
Let me have him repeat it.
Yeah.
Larry, will you repeat that one more time so we can get it for the record?
Oh, I, I just want to make sure that all the employees at DSS, this is what we do, that all employees are involved in this process and not just supervisors. Because as far as I'm concerned, supervisor is, is in, is in control of a group of people and make sure they do the things that need to be done. But I think all employees should be treated, should be treated equally.
Yeah, the way this, the way the policy is being implemented now is staff, staff only are being able to work remotely until a decision is made about supervisors. So staff are able to work remotely. Supervisors and above are not at this point until a decision's made here.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner got anything? I for one do not know where I sit on this, so. I see it both ways. I'm assuming it's the on. I didn't see Wilkes or Arndale County on here that join us. Do they have?
They, well, they didn't respond, and I, I started reaching out individually to counties on Thursday. And so I sent them the mass email out on Tuesday or Wednesday. I only had about a week to get you guys some information. So I just tried to, I don't get a lot of information from Arndale in general. Wilkes I can usually get, but I didn't hear from John, so I, I wasn't able to.
Well, and I mean, this is my opinion. Looking at other counties, I mean, I'm, I'm all about, because I mean, I've said it plenty of times, let's see what other counties are doing.
Wilkes don't allow it.
You know, but, I mean, I'm just going to say, Alexander County doesn't need to be a follower. We need to be a leader. And we're not as big as Arndale County, we're not as big as Catawba County. We're not as big as Rowan County, Lincoln County. But, you know, I think we should make a decision that we feel is best for us and for our employees in our county. I mean, I appreciate what, you know, the information that shows what other counties are doing, absolutely. But, you know, I'm, I'm not going to make my decision based on what other counties are doing. Because, um, other counties may, may not be as smart as we are. How about that?
I have another question. So like.
What?
When, let's say a supervisor's called in, let's say that we are obtaining custody of a child today, right now. Supervisor's called in, I assume with social workers, who else would come to that?
In that conversation, attorney, me typically, yeah.
So let's say that we're housing that child or whoever for the next day or so, so they're building up that time because they're with them. Is that going into comp time at that point?
Comp or bonus, you know, supervisors go to bonus, staff go to comp.
And are we using that comp time the following week or extending out?
Gosh, I wish we could. We, we're just not in a position where we can. You know, our, our comp and bonus times are high, as y'all have probably seen. We do our best to work those down, but especially when we have kids, when we, we just had that run of, of about six weeks. When you have kids that are in the building twenty-four, seven, it's really hard to work that, that comp and bonus down at that rate. But we try our best, but it, it never happens the next week.
How high is your comp time getting for some employees?
Some have over a hundred hours.
Over a hundred? I do know that there's really no way around accumulating that type of comp time depending on what calls come in and what happens.
And just, I mean, we are, we are, we're staffed well, it's just the size of our agency, you know. It, the rotation only goes so far. And so when you work four-hour shifts, staff are, but now the rest of the building is helping out more now than they ever have. So other units are starting to help out because their comp and bonus times are really, really low. And so there's a lot of room for them to be able to help. And they have really stepped up and started helping more. And so that's good. But anytime you have a kid in the building, it really wears out your comp and bonus time. Not to mention staff burning the candle at both, both ends.
They're missing time with their families.
Yeah, to stay with these kids.
Right.
Well, with that being said, my stance, I believe, is families are important. And due to the nature of DSS and calls and things like this that are un, not during working times and, or whatnot, I personally would agree to one day a week, one supervisor at a time.
On each side.
But I'll go with the pleasure of the board.
Which you kind of, we have, kind of have to.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, does anybody want to make a motion for either or?
One, one other question. You know, from a supervisory sta, well, yeah, supervisory stand, you know, standpoint or, you know, how, how often are supervisors working not, you know, non-normal hours?
I'd say a significant amount. Two of our child welfare staff are here.
I mean, you know, and I, I mean, I'm just, you know, I mean, I'm just asking, you know, because I don't know.
On, in child welfare, in child welfare, I would say a significant.
And I would assume child welfare would be, would be the, the point of contention, you know, where that's, that's going to be the case more than anywhere else. You know, because I mean, income maintenance and those things, you know.
Those run a little more regulated. My name's Trinity Story, I'm a social worker in child welfare. I am a CPS investigator and assessor. As far as our breakdown goes, we do have four supervisors. And it's always shown like this because that's really how our hallway is set up. They support each other, the, the two, to their team, understand both workers and caseloads and share information. Not that the other supervisor is ever unavailable. But if we needed something like I did today where I almost had to file custody at four fifty in the evening, any, any supervisor could sign for that if they needed to. But the two of mine were communicating that way. They knew, you know, somebody would be with me to go to the magistrate's office if it was after five o'clock. The, um, the adoptions and foster care supervisors do the same. Right now, we have really, I know you estimated forty, closer to twenty-one actual worker CPS positions, including techs, foster care workers, adoptions, licensing, assessors in-home, on-call, and intake. Each supervisor has a slot of almost six people at most. Having that one work-from-home day gives them time to do more clerical work, like reviewing documentation and getting to do things in a slightly quieter setting instead of having, you know, kind of chaos that goes on in the building sometimes. But they are also more than happy to come back in if it is their work-from-home day. If, if we had worked from home for supervisors today and my supervisor had been working from home, if I would have told her, hey, we might be taken non-secure, she'd have dropped everything and drove straight to the office to make sure that she was there to help with anything that we needed. Any of our supervisors are like that. Our supervisors give eight-hour shifts at a time when we have children in custody without placement at the office and then are still answering their phones at eight o'clock in the morning if we need them, even if they haven't come in. We do have that on a rolling basis flexibility that we call flexing our time. So if I stayed out in the field tonight till eight, nine, ten o'clock doing temporary safety provider paperwork and stuff like I did Friday, I was here from eight AM to seven PM with no lunch break, working on one case and trying to make sure that those children were safe. They were with a temporary safety provider, contacting absent fathers to make sure that they were taken care of. But that also meant that my supervisor was still answering the phone even after everything. We had assured that we didn't need to file a petition, everybody was still working together. They're more than happy to come back in if needed. And any supervisor is in our department. But when we do have problems where we have children placed at the agency themselves, the CPS supervisors are pulling just as much time as the workers are. And he's right, we are burning the candle at both ends because we still have a caseload. We still have ten, twenty, thirty other kids apiece that we need to see on a weekly, bi-weekly basis, need to address safety and risk concerns and make sure that these families, you know, get the supports and resources they need while also getting monitoring and making sure that that environment is a safe one for those children. So having that opportunity for them and that flexibility and any other flexibility that we can offer with different kinds of schedules that may be needed while having that monitored by their supervisors and having stipulations of, you know, if you're needed, you're expected to still be able to come in the same way the workers are. CPS workers can get an immediate case assigned any time of day. Mine came in at ten thirty, a second one came in right behind it, and a third one came in at about three o'clock today?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. So even on days when we're working from home, we can still get an immediate and we're expected, you know, to be dressed, to be ready, to drop everything, gather up our work and stuff that we've been doing, throw it in our bags, and hit the door running towards the office to get it done. So, um, yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Do I have a motion from the board to approve telework to the supervisors?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve telework, AKA flex scheduling, AKA whatever you want to call it. You know, one day a week for supervisors, as long as there's not a situation where there's, there are a lack of supervisory and/or competent can sign off on what the social workers need. Yeah, that's my motion, which is kind of long and wordy, sorry.
Do I have a second? I will second the motion. Larry, can you hear us still?
I'm listening to you, yes.
All right.
Yep, I got you.
All in favor, raise your hand. All against? Decline, sorry. Three to two on the record.
Thank you.
Is that all of yours?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Item number four, Alexandria County twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget message will be given by Mr. David Moose, our compliance officer.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Please find attached the proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The following budget message highlights some of the current and anticipated challenges facing Alexander County as well as some significant projects and accomplishments, which we hope to achieve in order to continue making Alexander County a wonderful place to live, work, and play. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget has been developed with a focus on achieving the goals, objectives, and strategic vision of the Board of County Commissioners, while maintaining an exceptional level of service provision to our citizens. In recent years, Alexander County has faced a number of significant challenges, including the COVID-nineteen pandemic and resulting economic impact, which we, along with our citizens, continue to experience even today. With the rising values of real property in Alexander County reflected in the most recent property revaluation cycle, coupled with recent inflation rates driving up the cost of goods and services for all, Alexander County is taking proactive steps to adjust its property tax rate to a level which seeks to balance the need for a fiscally responsible level of funding for operations and service provision, while minimizing the financial impact to its citizens as much as possible. These challenges are not unique to Alexander County, as many areas surrounding us face the same or similar issues. General fund budget requests for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four totaled sixty million, seven hundred forty-six thousand, eighteen dollars. After reviewing those requests and making necessary adjustments, the proposed general fund budget for Alexander County for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four totals fifty-six million, eight hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars. All funds in the budget are balanced. It is recommended to appropriate four million, two hundred and seventy dollars of fund balance in order to balance the general fund budget. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget follows the general reappraisal of real property for Alexander County. The revenue neutral tax rate, as defined by General Statute one fifty-nine dash eleven E, is the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year, equal to the revenue for the current fiscal year, if no reappraisal had occurred. The rate is then adjusted by a growth factor equal to the average annual percentage increase in the tax base due to improvement since the last general reappraisal. The reappraisal produced a tax base of four billion, twenty-seven million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred nine dollars for Alexander County. The tax levy for the current fiscal year is twenty-one million, eight hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. And the growth rate, growth factor since the last general reappraisal is one point four three percent. Using the formula mandated by state law, the revenue neutral tax rate for Alexander County is fifty-six and a half cents. The proposed property tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four is sixty-seven cents per hundred dollars valuation, which represents a decrease from the property tax, current property tax rate of seventy-nine cents for this current fiscal year. This proposed rate reflects a reasonable compromise, which is intended to help offset the impact of the recently completed property revaluation, while still allowing the county to maintain the current level of service provision to its citizens and to continue along a path to be fiscally responsible in planning for future funding needs. There are no proposed tax increases in the fire districts and no fee increases for building inspections or fire inspections. Although fire tax remakes rates will remain unchanged, all fire districts will receive additional funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four generated by the recent property revaluation cycle. This additional funding will help offset rising cost of operations faced by each department and ensure that they are able to provide vital fire protection and life safety services to the citizens of Alexander County. County departments requested two million, six hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars in total capital outlay expenditures. All requests were not able to be funded in this year's budget. In reviewing requests, an emphasis was placed on working to fund those items that were deemed critical to life safety, infrastructure maintenance, or continuity of operations for the county. As part of the general fund budget, a number of capital expenditures totaling one million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four are recommended in the budget. This includes the following non-exhaustive list of items highlighting some of the recommended capital outlay expenditures. Funding for a new fire training center at a hundred and one thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars. Sheriff's Office vehicle replacement, a cost of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. County vehicle fleet replacements at a total cost of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Updates to the HVAC system for the courthouse at a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. County building maintenance and repairs at various buildings at a cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Information technology network security enhancements and replacement of equipment at a cost of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And a new type-one ambulance for EMS at a cost of two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, as well as a quick-response vehicle at a cost of fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Other requests, which were not funded in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, will be addressed in future budget cycles or as situations may arise, which dictate a need for accelerated funding consideration. A number of major projects will begin during or continue into the new budget year. These include water and sewer infrastructure improvements, a broadband internet expansion project partnership, economic development initiatives, and public park improvements. The following is a list highlighting some of these projects. Each project below is funded in part or in full by state or federal grants and represents an investment in the future of Alexander County. These projects are not included in the general fund budget, but are accounted for in multi-year project budgets, which span the life of the project rather than just a single fiscal year. The twenty twenty-one ARP waterline extension project will extend approximately forty-two thousand, five hundred linear feet of water lines to, for public drinking water service to a number of areas around Alexander County where service has been previously requested. The Great Grant Partnership with ZIRIS is a project where Alexander County is partnering with Yadkin Valley Telephone Membership Corporation, doing business as ZIRIS, to provide matching funds for a broadband internet expansion project, which will serve portions of eastern Alexander County around Hidnay. The project is expected to serve more than three hundred homes and businesses in the area by providing fiber to the home for high-speed internet service. The matching funds are sourced from a portion of Alexander County's Federal American Rescue Plan Act funding. The Bethlehem Water Tank Project is a project to construct a new elevated water storage tank to serve the Bethlehem Water District. This new tank will help address current and future demands placed on the system by growth in the area. The Alexander Industrial Park Shale Building Sewer Extension is a project to extend sewer access to the new shale building site at the Alexander Industrial Park, which is being marketed to attract new industry to Alexander County. The Bethlehem Park Improvement Project is a project to provide upgrades to Bethlehem Community Park, which includes the addition of new pickleball courts, ballfield lighting upgrades, a new concession building with additional picnic shelter areas and handicap-accessible bathrooms, along with an accessible pathway to the lower ballfield and parking lot resurfacing. And the Alexander County Housing Our Teachers Project is a project that will renovate the former Chamber of Commerce building located at sixteen West Main Avenue in Taylorsville to include apartment space, which will provide housing to attract new teachers to Alexander County. The renovation will also include commercial retail space on the street level and new tenant storage in the basement. In addition to these current investments, Alexander County continues to make investments in other public areas as well. One such area, which continues to see improvements, is the County Parks Department. Courthouse Park, which opened May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, has proven to be a tremendous asset to the community in its first-year operation. Having already hosted a number of large events for the community, even more activities, such as the summer concert series, are planned for the twenty twenty-three operational season. The splash pad located at the park continues to provide fun and relief from the summer heat for area residents and visitors as well. Wittenberg Access Park, which is slated to open later this year, is located on the grounds of Wittenberg Access Area off Wildlife Access Road in the Bethlehem Community. The park will feature Alexander County's first public swim beach, as well as new picnic shelters, bathrooms, a concession stand, and a new walking path along the peninsula for area residents and visitors to enjoy. These improvements funded by, through a substantial investment by Duke Energy will complement a recent walking trail and new parking area constructed on-site by Alexander County. Alexander County will staff and operate the park during the operational season, which will run from Memorial Day to Labor Day once the park is open officially. A number of new positions, along with existing position reclassifications, were requested by various departments for the upcoming budget year. With the recent appointment of Shane Fox as the new county manager, it is our recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that most of the new positions and existing position reclassifications be postponed until the new county manager can reevaluate those requests and make a recommendation to the board. The only personnel changes recommended for funding in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, as an exception to this, includes funding for new park attendants, which are required to operate the Wittenberg Access Park, new paramedic positions required in order to staff the EMS quick-response vehicle, which will be stationed at the Bethlehem EMS base, and certain salary increases to a number of employees, which are required by Alexander County Personnel Policy Guidelines. During the current budget year, Alexander County was able to partner with Alexander County Schools to help hire and place school resource officers at all six elementary school campuses in the county. This was made possible through a grant obtained by the school system, which helped to fund these positions, along with an additional position for Taylorsville Elementary School, which is being provided by the Taylorsville Police Department. The addition of these officers helps to ensure the safety of staff and students at all of the county's school campuses. These officers serve three roles in the school: law enforcement officer, law-related counselor, and law-related education teacher. Furthermore, they are able to build a rapport with students and serve as a positive role model and resource in their daily lives. The addition of these officers represents a long-term goal of both the school system and Alexander County finally coming to fruition. Alexander County Schools submitted a total funding request for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year in the amount of nine million, two hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred thirty dollars. This request represented an increase of one million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars over the prior year's request. This increase in funding was attributed to a number of factors, including the need for replacement of funding for teaching positions lost due to decreased student enrollment numbers, an increase in retirement rate and health insurance employer cost, and a request for additional funding for the Virtual Academy program. While it would be the desire of Alexander County to meet all requests for funding, fiscal constraints simply do not allow for that to happen. After reviewing the school system's requests, it is recommended that funding the amount of seven million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars be appropriated from Alexander County General Fund for Alexander County Schools for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. In addition to this funding, it is also recommended that three hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars be appropriated from the School Capital Improvement Fund to cover the local match required for the state capital grants received by the school system for capital improvements at Sugarloaf Elementary School and Bethlehem Elementary School. The City of Hickory is proposing a ten percent increase in its water volume rate and a ten percent increase in the sewer volume rate for bulk sewer customers effective July one, twenty twenty-three. This is subject to approval, approval by the City, Hickory City Council as a component of the city's twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. In a letter in Alexander County from City of Hickory Public Utilities Director Sean Pennell, the rate increases were attributed to inflation in chemical, electricity, personnel, equipment, and material costs. With Alexander County facing a number of challenges this year, efforts have been made to present a budget that is as conservative as possible, while still ensuring continued operation of all county functions and service delivery to all citizens. With a number of infrastructure investments on the horizon, I am optimistic that Alexander County will continue to grow in a positive direction. And thankful for the efforts that staff have made towards keeping this year's budget request aligned with the board's priorities of presenting a fiscally sound and conservative operational and capital budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. The next step in our budget process will be the public hearing scheduled for June fifth, twenty twenty-three, at six PM at the CVCC Alexander Campus. With that, we'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Think I have any at this time, David?
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Do want to remind folks that we do have, I suppose it's scheduled for June the fifth, a hearing for budget at that time, that the public is welcome to attend. Item number five, budget ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, not just one thing to say in regard to that.
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. I'd just like to say, in regard to the school system, you know, we want to fund everyone as much as we can. And I'm not speaking for anyone else but myself. We've been working for several months on this budget and trying to make it as conservative as possible. And I have really grown to appreciate the budget amendments that our prior manager, Mr. French, would do because monies are coming in, his monies are going out. But all of that aside, when there's an entity that is losing students and losing money, there's no way that the county commissioners can come in and fund enough to make up that gap when people are, you know, leaving there. My advice to the school, the school board, the leaders of the school would be to look at, what can we do to reduce our budget to make it match up with what's coming in? And just as I said, we've, most all the commissioners, a couple especially, has worked real hard to get this budget that we've got to cut things maybe in places to be able to fund all the things that we can at a level that provides safety and protection. You know, those are the main things that we gotta have, you know, within the county. And that would be my word, just every department, you know, do the best you can to, you know, maintain within your budget, you know, what you have to work with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to echo what Ronnie said, and we can't make up all these shortfalls. And my, my personal opinion, I think we all make some, some more cuts. And, because I think we owe that to the taxpayers in this county, because all I keep hearing, what do I get from my dollar? You know, and, and there's, there's quite a few that's upset, and that's.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say I'll, I'll throw my piece. Being, being, you know, I'm not the most experienced board member here. I was on four years, took a two-year hiatus. Was crazy enough to run again. And I've been back for a few years. And the last thing that I and/or this board wants to do is cost our citizens one cent more than we have to, including ourselves, because all of us are taxpayers, just like everybody else out there. And to echo Commissioner Reese, when it comes to the school system, which I was on the Board of Education for eight years, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand uh, whatever, yeah. No, no, I was on before that, no, I'm sorry. Two thousand, let me think, let me, let me rephrase that. Came on board eighteen, sixteen, twelve. I was on from two thousand eight to sixteen, I was on from two thousand four, two thousand sixteen. No, that's twelve years, I, my math's not good right now, I'm sorry. Regardless, I was on two terms on Board of Education. I understand it takes a lot of money to run public education. I understand it takes a lot of money to run public education. I have two daughters that have graduated from Alexander County Schools. I have, currently have four children in Alexander County Public Schools. I have one more that has not started. So I, I'm a firm believer in public education. I want my children to get a good education. But when the state of North Carolina says, due to your declining enrollment, you need to cut eight positions countywide, that needs to happen. When I was on the Board of Education, I remember at that time, there were, there were almost six thousand students in Alexander County Schools, fifty-nine-hundred and something. And Mr. Reese, Commissioner Reese was there with me, Milton Campbell was there with me, David, the late David Odom was there with me, and there are a couple still on the board today that were there with me, that I, or excuse me, that I was there with. And we have gone from six thousand students to four thousand and a few. And a lot of time, you know, and a lot of time it's blamed on public, it's blamed on private school, it's blamed on home school, it's blamed on whatever. I understand, I get it, we're not getting, we're not getting state money for the children that don't come, that don't go to public school. But that's not the taxpayer's fault. That's not your fault, that's not my fault. That's a decision that those parents made. So we have to do the best we can with what we have left. And for several years now, the state has recommended reducing this, you know, you need to, to the school system, you need to reduce this, you know, by this many positions, teachers. And I hate to say it, I don't want to send anybody home, but I hate to say, but, but it's life. It's public education. And if we continue to try to defy the state of North Carolina, who by the way is over our county education system, and continue to pay for employees and staff people that the state says we don't need, we're wasting taxpayer money, plain and simple. We're wasting your money, we're wasting my money. And that's not what we're, that's not what, that's not what this board's here to do. We're here, we honestly are here to do the best thing we can do for the citizens of Alexander County. And every citizen in Alexander County does not have a child in the public school system. I have four. Two at West Alexander, two at, two at West Alexander, one in kindergarten, and one in N.C. pre-K at Bethlehem. I have two, like I said, I have, I have two that have graduated from Alexander, well, one from Alexander Early College, one from Alexander Central. And I'm now paying for those two to be in college. And the state isn't helping me. And Alexander County is not helping me. But I made the decision to make sure that my children got a college education, and that's my choice. And I've said to these gentlemen several times, you know, I live in Bethlehem. My parents lived in Bethlehem, my grandparents lived in Bethlehem. I'm deep Bethlehem, Alexander County. Now, my mom grew up in Taylorsville, which a lot of people don't believe because they all say, oh, Josh is from Bethlehem. My mom and her, the Jink, I'm a Jink, I'm half Jenkins from Taylorsville, okay? But, you know, if, if it came down to it, and Bethlehem Elementary School had to be closed, and my children had to go to Ellendale, Wittenburg, wherever, I hate to say it, so be it, it's public education. It's not, it's not my, it's not Josh Lille School. It's not Alexander County Commission School Book, School, it's public education. And I'm very happy to say that I wouldn't, wouldn't be upset if my children did have to go to Ellendale, or Wittenburg, or, you know, or Taylorsville, or whichever schools, because I honestly feel like they're all good schools. You know, but we've just, at some point, we've got, we've got to put our foot down and say, we can't continue to ask people, ask, ask the taxpayer to pay for an excessive amount of employees, teachers, support staff, and, and don't get me wrong, my mom's a retired teacher. My sister is currently a teacher in Davie County. My other sister is currently a guidance counselor at a school in Catawba County. I know all about education. I'm not trying to get away from public, you know, I'm not saying, but if the money's not there, the money's not there. And we have to make, we have to make the decision that sometimes makes us look bad. And all we're trying to do is make the best decision for the, for the thirty-eight thousand people in Alexander County, not for the two hundred and twelve in this school, or the three hundred and eighteen in this school and their parents who might get mad. And, you know, and we've had a lot of conversations privately, one-on-one, on the phone, and so on, and, you know, and I'm the guy that, I say what I think, I'm, you know, I talk too much, said it before, you know, but we just, at some point, everybody has to realize money doesn't grow on trees. And we're not, we're, we're not going to ask the population of Alexander County to pay extra money so it, so it, you know, I don't want to say can be wasted, because that's not, but we expect fiscal responsibility from every department that we support. Now, we don't have complete control over every department that we support, because the Sheriff's Department, we have no control over what they do with their money once we fund it. We have no control over the school system once we fund that money. You know, now, DSS, other county departments, we do have control as a board. But we expect everybody that Alexander County's tax money, you know, taxpayers' money goes to, to be fiscally responsible. And what fiscally responsible means is do absolutely the best you can with it every single day. And that's what we, and that's what we, we want to see from, you know, we all, we've had conversations, Mr., I mean, Commissioner Reese, how many times you called me and said, what do you think about the proposed tax rate we're talking about? I'd like it, you know, he said, I'd like it to be lower, and I'm going, I'd like it to be lower too. I think it's too high. You know, and it's, you know, we've had this conversation forty-seven times between, between, you know, between us, and we all wish we could make the tax rate zero. I mean, but, you know, but we have, there's a certain amount, a certain amount of money we have to come up with to keep things going. But we also, in addition to that, expect our departments to do their job and do, and everybody that we help fund to be as absolutely fis- fiscally responsible as they possibly And I'll hush now.
Mr. Leo, I think you're exactly right, and I've had a lot of calls. I've had some people that's got their kids in private schools, Christian schools, and some that tell me they're gonna take their kids out of public school and they're going the same route. The majority of the kids are still here. And if, if our public system is broke, I can't help that, you guys can't help that. And we're not over that. So if, if there's an issue there and that's the reason they're pulling these kids out and they're going somewhere else, then they need to address the problems they have so these kids will go back to public school, and I don't have a problem with funding if they do. Like you said, we can't pay for, for everything for everybody.
I do want to bring up that on page one that Mr. Moose read over a moment ago, and about paragraph number three. It said that the proposed general fund budget for Alexander County for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four totals fifty-six million, eight hundred, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That figure is large on some sense, and some sense it's a very small figure, depending on the types of budgets you work with and the numbers, but to Marty Pennell, that's a huge number. As a taxpayer, that's a huge number. But that second sentence is the sentence that gets me. The second sentence after that says it is recommended to appropriate four million, two hundred and seventy dollars of fund balance in order to balance the general fund budget. Now, what that means is, is we gotta make up the difference, four million bucks. So if anyone runs a business, you operate out of your income coming in, not your pocketbook or your savings account. So that brings us to an accountability. Accountability, in my opinion, and the way I look at things is, is I'm an elected official, this is my second term, I'm assuming that the majority of the citizens of our fine county have enough confidence in myself and these other three or four gentlemen, counting Yoder on the phone, to make hard, pertinent decisions to, for the safety, the well-being financially for this county. A business cannot continue to operate with pulling money out of their savings account or pocketbook year after year. So we do have a workshop coming up, June the fifth, and I'm going to ask a couple of, this might be unorthodox, not normal, but that's how I operate anyways, and I really don't care. So accountability, you know, that's, that's, that's us, that's the elected officials up here on this board, that's Entram County Manager, that will be a county manager in June for Mr. Shane Fox. And the accountability is this, each dollar a taxpayer pays in our county is out of their pocketbook, their savings account. It could have been a dollar spent on their children for something whatever. It could have went to something else, but yet, you know, we live in the United States and you're gonna pay taxes. So department heads, you know, you still have the same accountability because you're overseen by your director or your, your school administrator or whoever, and then you have elected officials on other boards, you know, that have that same accountability. Well, this board takes accountability pretty, pretty, pretty heavy. And if we do have department heads and directors and supervisors that have submitted budgets, and you know that there's an area in there that you could trim some fat off, now this, I told you it would be unorthodox, you could bring it to our attention to help us with Because we all live here, we may not all work here, but we do live here, we raise our families here or whatnot, and, you know, Alexander County's success is your success as well. So this board has, over the last several years, put in a significant amount of infrastructure to have the means necessary for expected growth. We have areas around us as far as Hickory, then you've got the Mooresville, Huntersville, Cornelius, Troutman, Sherrill's Ford, all of those areas that are rapidly growing, well, they're gonna run out of land, and they've already stopped some growth in those areas on a couple of the counties because they're outpacing what they can provide. We are going to be a bedroom community at some point, we already actually are, in my opinion. So subdivisions will at some point occur here, even though you hear talk, and I hear talk about it for years, you know, it seems like. Someone will, will initiate that, and then you will have several homes going in at some point. Well, every time you develop a little half-acre lot that's worth about, you know, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, the tax revenue on that is very small, but once you put a three hundred, a six hundred thousand dollar house on it and other utilities and improvements, that tax value jumps up significantly versus what that vacant lot was. But we are also known as agricultural county, farms, this and that, which, you know, I'm proud that we are. But at the end of the day, it's accountability, we're going to adhere to accountability on this board, and we are going to figure out some more ways to try to shave that four million deficit off in some fashion. So there's my sense.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one other thing I would say, and this is gonna be brief. Alexander County is very agricultural, and, and we're very proud of that. I have a lot of friends that are farmers. Proud, proud to have friends that are farmers, I am. From soybeans, corn, all that kind of stuff, to, you know, chickens, well, you know, dairy farms are far and few between these days, but one thing a lot of people don't understand about being rural and agricultural county is, and I'm just gonna throw some numbers at you, okay? Say you've got a hundred acres, and it is a farm, and the tax value on your farm is, the, the assessed value is one million dollars on your hundred acres, you know, with chicken houses and, you know, or, you know, barns, whatever may be there. Well, agricultural uses give a tax break, and, and, and that tax break equals ninety So of your hundred-acre farm with barn, you know, barns, chicken houses, whatever, the taxable value of that farm is one hundred thousand, not one million, one hundred thousand. If you own a large tract of timber, AKA woods, okay? I don't mean timber farm, I don't mean you've planted, you know, you've planted white pine trees every six feet and they're growing big and you're gonna, you know, whatever, I'm talking, if you, if you own a tract of woods, which my parents did when I was a kid, now they didn't, we didn't have a, we didn't have a conservation plan, but if you own a tract of woods of a certain size, and you get a conservation plan from the Forestry Service, which costs you a couple hundred bucks, you are then taxed at ten percent of your value, just like a farm. Which means if you have a tract, you know, you have a tract of land that the tax value is half a million, five hundred thousand dollars, all of a sudden, you pay taxes on fifty thousand dollars. That's it. That's all. Now, think about how much of Alexander County is in agricultural land and/or woods, which is my way of saying timber forestry, woods, okay? This is our quandary. Our problem, from a governmental standpoint, when it comes to income, is we are very rural. We don't have huge industrial properties, we don't have that many significant commercial We have single-family homes, like mine and yours. And that's the only thing that Alexander County has to generate significant revenue from. And that's, and that's not, that, that makes it tough. That makes it really hard. You know, the only other source of revenue we have is sales tax, because if you buy something in Alexander County and you pay seven percent sales tax, two cents of that seven per dollar comes to Alexander County. Well, let's see, we have, and I, and I know the tax rate varies, but we, we do not have one single new car dealership. Do we have it? We don't have any big box stores, other than we have, we have one Walmart in Taylorsville. But we don't have a Best Buy, we don't have a, you know, you name it, to generate big sales tax, we don't have it. Which, and what I'm getting at is, that's even more reason that we have to be fiscally Because the only place we get our, the only place that the county gets its money is from you and your family and my family. I mean, don't get me wrong, our sales tax numbers have been up every year for several years, and we appreciate that more than, you know, I mean, that's great, but, you know, the mom and pop store that opens up... But, you know, the mom-and-pop store that opens up in, you know, in Hidnike, or Taylorsville, or Bethlehem, or, you know, the little mom-and-pop store that opens in Sugarloaf, or Wittenburg, or whoever, that's, that's great, it's a help, don't get me wrong, we appreciate it, we love it, we want their, you know, but it's really not gonna make much difference when it comes down to what we, you know, what the tax rate has to be, and how many millions of dollars that we have to have to provide the services that are necessary. You know, and like I say, just, just to echo Chairman Pennell, you know, we have to be And that's what we're trying to do, and in doing so, we're probably, you know, we're gonna, we're not gonna make everybody happy, we can't. Wish we could, but we can't. There's, there's that.
All right, moving on to Larry. Did he say something?
He's watching the ballgame. He's eating ice cream, by the way.
Larry, did you say anything?
No, I'm good, go ahead.
Okay. Item number five.
Yep.
Okay. Item number five, budget ordinance amendments, number 63 through 67, delivered by Jamie Starnes, clerk to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number 63 is to increase the County Parks Department budget for the Rick French Memorial Plan for Rocky Face Park. Number 64 is to increase the Senior Center budget for a senior Medicare Patrol project grant from the SHIP program to host an identity theft prevention shred-a-thon and fraud prevention event. The contingency budget is being adjusted due to a previous line item transfer requested in error when preparing for this grant-funded event. Number 65 is to increase the landfill closure fund, closure fund budget for environmental monitoring costs estimated for the remainder of the 22-23 budget year. 67 is to adjust the budgets of the water funds based on data from year-to-date reports from City of Hickory. And 67 is to adjust the Bethlehem Sewer Fund budget based on data from year-to-date reports from City of Hickory.
Do I have a motion to approve budget ordinance? As read.
Make a motion to approve budget ordinance amendments 63 through 67 as given.
Second. Have a second, so, all in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item number six, board appointments and reappointments of council on aging and juvenile crime prevention council, Jamie Starnes.
This first set of appointments are for the council on aging, appoint Pat Carter for three years, and reappoint Christie Hunt, Jerry Perry, Douglas Howes, and Julie Sebastian for three years. The next set is the juvenile crime prevention council, appoint Ethan Windsor as the designated for Douglas Bowman, Chief of Police, with a term expiring on June 30th, 2024, and also reappoint Eugene Smith. He is transferring from the person under 21 member to a county commissioner appointee with a term expiring June 30, 2023. He originally was appointed as a person under 21, and he is now older than 21.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the committee appointments as read.
Everybody's had the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given in our book.
Second. All in favor? We will be going into closed session, only to come out of closed session to adjourn the meeting, per 143-318-11A, 5 and 6 contractual and personnel. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we'll go into closed session.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?